The time is five thirty-three. And I am calling to order the South End Landmark District Commission, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing. Commissioners present are Chris DeBoer, Catherine Hunt, John Freeman, Peter Sanborn, and myself. Have I missed anybody? If not, I'll carry on. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. I don't see any hands raised. Sarah, do you?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great. We'll carry on. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. So tonight's agenda will begin with violations, followed by design review. We will then have administrative review and approval of administrative review, and then review and discussion of revised standards and criteria. There will also be staff updates, and then we will adjourn.
John, can I interrupt really quickly, just as a quick point of order? I wanted to ask the person logged into the Zoom call, whose name is just Peter on here. I just wanted to double check to make sure if you are Commissioner Peter Sanborn or not. If you are, if you can just raise your hand, we'll make you a co-host. And if you're just a different guy named Peter, then sorry for calling you out. I think it might not be Peter Sanborn seeing that his hand is not raised, but I just need to be sure, just in case.
Okay. In which case, we'll have to correct the attendance list. Okay, so we'll move into violations. Six sixty-five A Tremont Street. And the work was to install new storefront signage. Is the, is there somebody representing six sixty-five A Tremont Street here?
Eric, are you here? Some people are just logging in right now. I'll get them a second. Eric, for six sixty-five A Tremont Street, if you're on the call, please raise your hand. We can come back to this.
Okay.
I'll shoot them an email.
Great. Thanks, Gabby. So we'll move now into design review. And the first application is fifty-nine East Springfield Street. And the work is to install a new handrail on the left side of the stairs adjacent to the restaurant addition. And if the applicant is here, please introduce yourself first with your name, and then proceed to present.
Greg? Um, I, we can move on to the next application and come right back to this one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is
This is supposed to, I'm sorry, this is supposed to say fifty-two?
Oh. It's supposed to be sixty-two?
Fifty-two, sorry.
Fifty, fifty-two?
Yes.
No, I think this is fifty-nine.
Then, I think
No, no, no. This previous one is fifty, fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
This next one is fifty-two, and there's just a mistake on this slide.
Okay.
So this is fifty-two East Springfield Street.
And the work is to, for fifty-two East Springfield Street is to replace the non-original ganged window unit. Is that the, is this the right one?
Yeah.
Um, at the mansard roof level with a new, um, with a new window configuration. So if the applicant for fifty-two East Springfield is here, please identify yourself and present.
Hi, good, uh, good evening, everyone. This is Danny Stevens and Brian Anderson of Anderson Porter Design. We're the architecture firm of record for this job.
Could you give us your name again one more time?
Yes, my name is Danny Stevens.
Danny.
My principal, Brian Anderson.
Okay, great. Thank you, Danny. Because your, your name isn't identified on your slide, so I wanted to make sure I got it right.
Apologies.
Okay, so if you're ready to present, carry on.
Yes, so here on fifty-two East Springfield Street, we are looking to replace all of the current windows that are vinyl and nonhistoric with two over two simulated, or excuse me, two over two divided lights, um, which I believe all but one of these windows has been moved to admin review.
Yep, so we just need to talk about the one ganged window on the mansard level.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so there on, on this image here is on that top right window F-one. We are looking to replace this window in kind with a correct, yes, thank you, with two double-hung windows flanking picture window in the middle, but just adding in those divided lights to match the style of the rest of the divided lights on the single double, on the on the double hung's single punch windows.
And Commissioners, that's the only item I wanted to bring this to you because it's a nonoriginal opening with a nonoriginal window proposing for a replacement with a not something that would typically be historic. So this is why I wanted to bring it in front of you and really just talk about the proper configuration for what should fit here in this dormer mansard level.
Okay. So since we we're all experienced Commissioners here, I think I'll just say we'll go right into questions by Commissioners first, and then we can go into comments. So, Chris, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, I was just, uh, reading the staff recommendations, and they were talking about ganging it, similar to what a, a dormer would be, like a single
Put that in the form of a question, Chris?
Well, I'm just asking if they were amenable to that.
That, that's, that, that's moving into comments. Questions is what color, what size, you know, that sort of thing. So, um, if you don't have those types of questions, then, um, I'll ask Catherine. Catherine, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Is what we're looking at what's proposed or what's existing?
Photograph is existing. The photograph on the right of the slide in color is existing. And the drawing on the left of the slide is what is proposed.
Well, it doesn't look a heck of a lot different.
It's divided light.
Placing kind, but we're going to do the divided light on the double hungs.
So Catherine, just just this one up here on the top right at the dormer? So that's the original, I mean, that's the existing condition? And here's the proposed, so is having sort of two flanking, two over two?
Same height, same width. Um, same rough opening, we're replacing it in kind.
Okay, thank you. Uh, John, do you have any questions?
Um, is, does, can you, do the windows, does the window on the left center on the window directly below it? And does the center window?
A little difficult to tell due to the dormer wall being set back from the, um, from the main facade. But I do not believe it is actually centered. It is offset by a few inches.
From your dimensioning, field dimensioning, you think it's offset a little bit?
I do, yes.
Clearly, the one on the right is.
Yeah.
And the one in the center, I'm saying one in the center, that looks like it's offset a little bit, too?
Yes.
Okay. And what kind of window, uh, I'm sorry, you probably said this.
Same manufacturer, same manufacturer, same color, same structure as what we're proposing, which is a wood true, uh, true divided light, double insulated, uh, with a aluminum clad.
Okay.
So same manufacturer, same materials, just
in a nonhistoric configuration to match what is currently there.
Right.
Uh, any other questions, John?
Uh, no, not, not this time.
No, and, and you asked my question about what the replacement was material-wise. Uh, so I think we can go into comments now. And, um, Chris, would you like to make a comment?
No.
No? Okay. Um, John?
Well, what's, it's funny, what's catching my eye in the photograph is that the windows are offset much more than I, I think probably the, the discussion is going to be about the picture unit in the middle. But it's, what's catching my eye is that they're offset. And what I am wondering is if a larger replacement with the windows aligned, if that's possible. It's, it kind of doesn't look possible, or something that would make it more symmetric would be would move it more in the direction of a historic precedent. Now, what we usually do about these dormers is we usually say that, that as long as they move in the direction of a historic precedent, of a historic precedent, not speaking well tonight, that, um, it's something that we can possibly, that we can accept. Doesn't have to be perfect. So I think this is getting close. It just, it's the mullion uh, also that's, that sort of catches my eye where the, um, between each of the double hung windows and the uh, and the picture unit. I'm wondering if that can be a larger mullion and could be darker. So just so the windows look a little bit more like the single units below. Maybe that should have been a question.
Sure. Uh, John, I'm not quite sure I understand where
So I'm asking, I'm sort of commenting and asking two things, and then as I'm looking at it, I'm, I'm asking, could there be anything done to make these windows alignment a little better with what's below? Uh, in other words, if with the and two possible suggestions. If the rough opening could be made a little bigger, and the center window centered over the window below in conjunction with enlarging the mullion between each double hung and the picture unit, I'm imagining that that might make it look more with below, but I, I want to see a drawing.
So
Just a thought.
Excuse me, um, before you respond, Danny, I just want to make sure um, John's finished with your suggestions, are you?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Danny.
Uh, this is Brian Anderson's, thank you.
Oh, Brian, okay.
Yep, that's good. I'll break that, my answer into two parts, as your question was framed sort of in two parts. One was, could the rough opening be made larger? Uh, we'll see. I, I don't know immediately. It's, it has to do with the room configurations on the interior. The second part, I, I think is easy to answer, which is yes, we can show the detail or create the details so that there is a strong delineation, vertical separation between the three units, between the two flanking operable and the center fixed picture. That's, that's fairly easy to do, and the uh, color, they will all match, they will be black, or pretending that to be a, a black or a dark gray, whatever that except the color is. Yep.
So, um, uh, okay. That's, that's your comment. Catherine, do you have comments?
Well, I maybe I shouldn't ask this, but I, I, is a picture window like that acceptable, some, a big, I, well, I guess it's a question comment. I, I just, my comment is that that doesn't look historic to me.
It's not.
And, um, I would concur with your comment, and I'd go so far as to agree with staff comments that I think um, whenever, um, a replacement like this is being applied for, uh, Brian, um, we want to go closer to the district standard than the existing condition. Um, and the district standards do not include um, picture windows in a mansard dormer or anywhere um, in townhouses. That's just not the vocabulary of townhouse windows, um, in the South End. And so, um, it would be better if you were to replace the picture window with a double hung window that were two over two with two um, smaller, same height, but narrower side windows that are, um, flanking it, that are one over one, which would give us the configuration that is often found in the original dormers in these townhouses, that they would be faceted, it would be a bay window dormer with a, a front window that's two over two and two angled windows that are one over one because they're narrower. Um, at least that would bring us closer to the, um, you know, typical district vocabulary for, um, windows, the, the, the larger set of windows in a mansard. I mean, this, this, um, dormer has been reconfigured and enlarged. It was probably two separate dormers, um, one three-window dormer and one single-window dormer. Um, but, uh, they've now been combined into a single shed dormer. Um, but, um, while we wait for some future date when somebody might want to restore that to its orig- original configuration, it would be better to bring it closer to, um, what would be found within the district. So anyway, that's my comment. I don't know, John, how do you feel about that?
I think it's a better suggestion.
Was different.
Yeah, I think it's a better suggestion than mine.
Can I ask a question for the applicant? Um, here's the window schedule that was included with the application. And here's a close-up for the proposed replacement of that window we're talking about. John Amadeo, were you sort of saying that you would rather it was like three individual windows? Or would a sort of reconfiguration of this be okay?
I don't think a reconfiguration of this almost square picture window, even if it were in that dimension, but made double hung two over two, it would not work because it is not vertical enough looking. It's too square looking, and the windows in South End townhouses have more of a strong verticality. So the dimension of that middle window would have to be slightly narrowed to be a, um, you know, a, a typical proportion of a two over two window um, flanked by two narrower windows that could be one over one. And, um,
And a heavier mullion between. Therefore.
Can I have my comment back?
That, John, excuse me, Brian, hold, hang on a second, John?
And a heavy, and therefore, a heavier mullion between.
That's right.
Which would make it look more like the dormers down the street.
That's right.
I think that's a really good suggestion. I think the client gets what they need. I think that's a much better suggestion. Thank you.
Sure thing. And, um, credit goes to, um, staff, too, for their um, recommendations. So, um,
Can I just make one comment, or just as noticed of these, can I have my?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, a lot of these townhouses on East Springfield, at least on, on this, uh, even side, have had two single dormers. So they didn't have a lot of the, you know, single dormer and then the, uh, three-window dormer. They were single, uh, that were set over the space between the three windows below. So I don't know if that changes any thoughts to that, because, um, I agree that the three-window looks good, but I just didn't know if that changed any thoughts.
Well, that's, that's interesting, Chris, and, and certainly something to take into consideration. Um, generally speaking, um, it looks like the building to the right and left, though, might have multi-window dormers that are original. It's, is that true?
Yeah, it's, it's all over the place, but I know that there are some original buildings of the same size on this street that have two, you know, separate, individual windowed uh, dormers.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, which would, yeah, i- if we were to have that influence our decision here, it might suggest that only a single window would be allowed to replace the triple window with the picture window in the middle. But I, I don't know that we have evidence that that was true for this specific building. And, um, I don't know if we want, in this particular instance, to have the applicant drum up such evidence, especially since it's not in their interest, they would end up with less, um, light. Um, but, uh, if the dormer were to be ever applied to be reconfigured, I think we would certainly want more data. Um, you know, if, if anybody came in to want to alter the dormer itself, um, maybe that would be the time to get into that research. So, um, John or Catherine, any thoughts on that notion that Chris brought up?
Not I. Go ahead, John.
Well, I think, I mean, it would always be preferable to, to move to the historic configuration, but in general, for projects like this, where buildings were altered before the uh, commission was in place, um, we try to, to, to not to expand a project scope um, and just work within what's, what's being proposed. In this case, they're just replacing windows. So I think this is, I think that what's been described here moves it in a positive direction.
Yeah.
And that's usually what we, all we ask for.
Mm-hmm.
For, for a dormer.
Just point of information.
Uh, yeah, Chris?
No, that was it.
Oh, that was it, okay. Okay, great. Um, so, um, does, does the applicant understand what we're, um, after, um, here?
If I do understand correctly, it's being proposed that we configure a two over two for the center with a slightly different proportion, so that it's not purely square. And then we flank that with two one over one uh, by nature now or, uh, uh, configuration. So we, and, and I, I heard it proposed that perhaps we do that with, by beefing up the blocking divisions between the three units. We do create the proportion by increasing the, the wood, the mass of the, of the, of the, of the muntens, the, the, the vertical framing between the center unit and the two side units.
That, that's exactly right.
That's what I heard.
Yes, so, um, I think we're gonna, um, I think we would be ready for a motion to that effect. So if anybody would be, need to make a motion, please do.
Chris, do you think you can do it?
I, I would like to make the motion that we, uh, uh, accept this, uh, application with provisos, the provisos being that, uh, with these three windows, we change them to a, uh, larger, well, a, uh, two over two in the center, and then two, uh, one over ones on the side and separated by larger, uh, mullions that give the look of height to, to that gang of windows.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, and thank you, Chris, thank you, John, and we will go to public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And, um, Sarah, do we have anybody raising their hand, or have we received anything via email?
I did not see any hands raised, and I don't see any written public comment.
Okay. So, um, I will go, thank you, Sarah. I will go right to a vote then. Catherine?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Uh, thank you very much, Brian, and if you had somebody else with you, Danny?
That's it, Danny, Danny and Brian, thank you.
Yep. Thank you both.
And John, our previous applicants who we've had to skip over, um, are both here. I'm not sure where you'd like to go in.
So should we go back to violations then?
Yeah. Start all over. Here we go.
Okay, so we're looking at six-six-five A Tremont Street, which, um, is under the heading of violations. Uh, so we've gone back to that now that the, um, property representative is here. The work was to install new storefront signage. And, um, if somebody is here representing that property, please introduce yourself.
Uh, hello, I'm Eric. I'm the manager of this, the restaurant and six-six-five Tremont Street. I apologize for the late, because I was working, I'm working right now. Uh, for the sign? Yeah, good. How are you?
Eric, can you adjust your camera so we can see you?
Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm Eric.
Uh, I apologize for the sign, because we installed it without, like, you guys' permission. The reason we, we want to hide, have this sign, because uh, we're going to attract more people, like, to come to the store. And we compared this sign put in the, uh, putting, putting on this area, uh, the current location and the location above the the, the wing. But because, uh, we didn't put on the, on the wing, because the, the landlord's daughter living in their room, the window just right above this, the wing. So when we light up the, the sign, the, her whole room is going to be light up. That's why I didn't put on the above this, uh, wing.
So Commissioners, we issued a violation notice. We, we had seen this applicant a while back, but this is a new violation notice for this new sign. Um, in addition, there are just some unapproved storefront changes just overall. Um, but the presentation seems to just be mostly focused on the sign, so just so you are aware.
Yeah. So right now, the, for the application for to have this sign, this, the sign used to be like this, 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 this. But the sign
Before the sign was up, so this is
Before the sign installed it, right now, the sign already being installed, it's like the previous uh, picture.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's like this. It's at night, so only the later is going to be lights up. And I do have the daytime picture, too, if you want to see. This is the sign itself.
So, um, Eric, did you know that you're supposed to apply for design approval?
Yeah, 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 that's, I'm a project, because I, because I forget to apply this yeah, sign.
Yeah, so that's, that's
Yeah, it is my bad, yeah.
I do apply for an approval for this design. We, we would have denied it because it doesn't comply with the standards and criteria of the district. So we have to figure out what to do. Um, so, um, Catherine, any comments?
Well, gosh, uh, I, there's so much here. I guess we're limited to talking about the sign. Is that what we're doing?
Right, we're only talking about the sign.
No, we can, well, no, no, no. So the violation was issued for, I guess that, that what they are proposing is, uh, in response to the violation is to, uh, to uh have the signage that was put up ratified. But the violation that was issued was for unapproved storefront changes, so there are.
No, 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 no. That storefront did already proved.
Uh, no, no, no. So we didn't approve everything that's out here in the storefront. For example, we didn't approve the mechanicals that exist behind the sign. We didn't.
It's 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 approved. It's like three years ago.
By us. Respectfully, Eric, it wasn't by us. The I maybe I S D and you went. I'm let me finish, please, let me finish. I'm just saying in regards to the South End Landmark District Commission, there are changes that happened at the storefront that were not reviewed or approved by us. And you maybe you got you, you, I'm not saying you, please, Eric.
Eric, you have to wait.
Please. Maybe you got a permit from I S D. I'm not saying that did or didn't happen, but we do still need to review and I'm just letting you know the South End Landmark District Commission did not review and approve the mechanicals in the front. I understand if you need them. I completely understand, but I'm just saying that was not by us.
Because when I attend the last hearing, we have this approved by you guys.
You approve, you applied for signage at the last hearing.
We didn't have this for the for the front, front storefront change for the construction.
There was different signage last time you were here.
We don't have the signage.
You have, but you have this signage now.
No, it's signage for this one. But be before I have another hearing like three years ago, two years ago for the storefront change.
So I was there for that. It was for the signage, but let's just focus on this application.
The so for the signage is for this one.
Let's focus on this application. Commissioners, do you want to ask any more questions?
May I ask a question, John?
Yeah, go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, the straight on view, if you could switch to that, Gabby. Uh, yeah, is what is that? Is that really what it looks like, that it's encroaching on those stoops on either side?
No, the stool is like uh it's it's already removed.
This looks like some long horizontal thing with some sort of canopy or scalp edge, and it looks like it extends over the stoops. Or am I not looking at this correctly?
That might be the perspective of the awning. The awning that's there was approved. Um, but this is what it actually looks like now.
Okay, so so my comment is just that the signage is completely wrong and they have to resubmit, so that's it.
Uh, right.
Hey, Eric, Eric, you, it's not your turn to speak. Um, so hang on. Um, John, any comments?
I agree with Catherine. I don't, I think there's too much going on here that uh we can't take the time. It was not fair to the other applicants to work all this out. I think we have to set a a time period for the sign to be removed and for other design uh to be uh they need to hire uh somebody, uh architect or sign company that can help them with it. I think there's.
Eric, Eric, hang on.
Or, you know, if you can do it yourself, but I, this is not gonna work and I don't think we should.
I am confused. I'm confused. So right now we are talking about the storefront, the whole thing or talking about the design.
So when we mailed a violation letter to you, it said violation was unapproved storefront changes. When I got the application from your, when I I have. Because you are. You asked, you asked me a question and I have to be able to finish answering your question. So we issued the violation for unapproved storefront changes. You submitted your application as you're supposed to do. You did the right thing by submitting the application to remediate the work. But it was only for signage, so your presentation only covers the signage aspect of anything that's happened in the front that hasn't occurred, that hasn't been reviewed by the commission. So that's what, that's the nature of what we're talking about here. We we were brought in because of, yes, because of the storefront. But now your application is to install this signage, is to get the signage approved. So that's what we're discussing specifically right now. But if the commissioners have questions about other storefront changes, they have the ability to ask you those questions.
So um I have a question um for Eric. When did the storefront mechanical um equipment go in? When was that installed? He's still muted.
You have, you have done mute.
So I have a question. A mechanic things means what kind of the it's a sign, right?
No, so this here?
The things that for he, this one, it's temporary, it's removed.
The mechan, no, no, not the signage, the it looks like it's some sort of pump. Is it an HVAC system, something? The mechanicals behind here?
Uh, the things.
That's what he's asking.
Last time we, I have a hearing here for the whole things is include this one.
You haven't answered my question. When was it installed?
It's three years ago.
Three years ago.
Yeah, for the last hearing I attended, for the storefront change, when we're doing the construction, renovating of this store, the whole store. And we discussed the paints color and how to decorate because I do submit three kind of design of the storefront. So this is the final storefront design has been proved by by you guys.
Okay, Gabby, do you know when the original application was?
From from a few years ago. I can try to see in a second.
It's sometime twenty.
Twenty twenty two. Yeah, yeah, it was like April.
I have meet some two girls in at the store.
That's us, Eric, that's us. And we told you, we ever have to do work again to tell us.
Yeah, when you, when you came here, it was there. We didn't put anything there more for the for the HVAC things. It was there. I have three years picture. Years ago.
Oh. This was.
When we opened the store at two thousand twenty three, twenty two, yeah, two thousand twenty two.
I signed May third, twenty two.
Yeah, it's already there because there's no, only the thing is different is the white square thing. But this one is temporary. We will remove it. So I uh from my opinion of you, because right now we discussing the site, the big site with the two letters. This is the only change we put down. It's from compare to three years ago. Or maybe two years ago, yeah. This is what I'm thinking about because for the storefront, we didn't do anything about it.
I walked by there many, many times, uh, and I do remember when same when it went in. I can't tell you exactly what date it was, but it was, it was two years or so ago that that Slim Jim or whatever it is appeared in the front area.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, when we talk about the the hearing day, I mean, commissioners, if you want to continue for more information, I think that could make more sense, but it's it's up to you. Um, we have, I mean, this is all a record of whatever was written on the agenda in three years ago, almost. Um.
So um Gabby, given that the agenda states that the violation is for signage, are what shouldn't we at le- very least conclude our discussion on the signage?
Yeah. Oh, definitely you should. So their proposed work is to install new signage. Um, addressing that, so we can definitely keep talking about it.
Right.
Don't just focus on.
They've already installed it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's what is still there, so we can remove it if it's not that not too poor or not good.
Right.
Yeah, so right now I'm trying to get the proof of this is sign on there because uh that's that's why I'm uh I'm here for the hearing because I I'm thinking about this. I was thinking about that, talking about the sign out the storefront, the whole storefront, it's a sign.
Oh, okay, um. So uh I think we're concluding that the sign is noncompliant with the district standards and it needs to be placed, which means that you you have to come back to us with a proposal for something that we could approve.
Uh, because uh I receive, uh, okay, okay, speak like I receive email from Gabrielle or some someone's talk, uh, ask me, uh, do we think about put to the sign above the wing?
I'm not quite sure what you just said. Could you repeat that, please?
Uh, yeah, someone sent me an email uh like yesterday to ask. Yeah, so do I. I'm thinking about to put a sign on the ring above the ring.
Awakening on an awning, John.
On awning, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, I do email her about it because the reason I did, we didn't put that because the landlord's daughter is leaving there. The window is just right behind the awning. So that's why we put choose to put it there.
Well, staff is gonna help you come to us with an approvable proposal. And my advice to you would be to work with staff and to to um listen to them and try and, you know, get what you need, but in a way that complies with the district standards. And come back to us. In the meantime, this sign needs to be removed. And um, you know, we're gonna set a certain time limit by which all of this needs to happen. Um, because it's a violation. It can't just um sit there unattended. It has to be addressed. So um amongst ourselves, we're going to determine what a reasonable amount of time would be to resolve this. Um, and I am open to suggestions from fellow commissioners. John, would you like to suggest something?
Uh, all I can suggest is that the down the street, there's two ways that signs are displayed or three, if you count in the window. Uh, one is an awning and one is a blade sign. And sometimes a combination of the two. Um, so I could say that's the way that they should start to to look, but remember that large graphics on the on the large part of the awning is not allowed. We do allow them on the valence, I believe.
Right.
Yes.
Short part that hangs down. And that's what these this building, the the previous restaurants had an awning sign. I'm not saying you should do the same thing. I think your graphics are actually much nicer. Um, but the um, but that's probably the place to start.
Mm hmm. Did we say anything about the lighting of this signage?
Not yet.
Good point. Yeah, go ahead.
Um. The um, just Eric, just so you know, one of the things about this sign, one of the several things about this sign that is not compliant is that we can see the light source. Um, and um, we we do not approve uh light coming directly through uh cutouts like this.
It's it's backlight. This is backlight.
Right, that's not approvable.
It's not approvable. We're seeing the light source through through the translucent film uh of the letters and the graphics. And um and we can't see that. Uh, we can't approve that. So um uh usually we have channel letters that are solid um with a halo of light behind them or there is um a separate light fixture that is aiming light at the sign, but we don't have light coming through the sign that we can see. That's not approvable. So um, you know, you should work with.
Yeah, so.
So you can aim a light at the sign as long as we don't see the source of the light.
You didn't see the source of the, you didn't see the source of the light.
You know, Eric, you have a habit of speaking over people and it's a bad habit. I would stop it. Um, and uh the other option is to create um solid graphics and solid letters that have light behind them that we can't see the source of the light. We just see the halo of the light creating a uh so anyway, that's that's your two options.
That is wrong. It's like there is no source you can see.
Yeah, I thought.
That's a, that's a backlight. It's covered by the organic board sheets.
Well, it however you describe it, it's not approvable. So um, you know, we're gonna go with that and we're telling you what is approvable and you can work with that. Um, just like everyone else who comes before us and asks for signage, we're telling you the same thing we tell everybody. So we can't treat you differently than we treat.
No, no, I'm trying to, but I I I because I'm working, there is no nice source you can see.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
There's no nice source you can see.
Yes, there is. And under our definition, if there is a straight line through a translucent material from one's eye to the lamp, which is the proper term, um, it is not allowable.
Okay.
This is a translucent material.
For the.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just not allowed and it's in our regulations, so it's nothing that we can do. I think this is a nice thing. You should take it, maybe hang it inside the store or something like that. Um, it it's I, like I said before, I like the graphics. I like the proportion of it. I like the way you've lettered it, but it's not allowable under these regulations.
Oh, maybe, yeah, it's uh okay, I, yeah, because the maybe, maybe you you I didn't describe it right, but this isn't, this is the night night stream powered by the, powered by the plastic sheets.
I I do think we need to move on because we have other people waiting.
I agree.
I so.
I'm afraid there isn't anything you're gonna say that's gonna change the outcome here. So we're gonna leave it that this needs to be replaced. Um, I think are we gonna give him sixty days? John or Catherine?
I think thirty days to remove it and uh sixty days if you want it to make another application.
Yeah.
And I'll make a motion to that and also the staff wants to consult uh commissioners, they can do that.
On an individual basis. Um.
Yeah, set up a subcommittee too. That could be.
Or set up a subcommittee, but um we will um give you um thirty days to remove the sign and sixty days to come back to us with a an application for replacement. And um and we'll move on from there.
And one more question. Should I submit to submit to another application?
Not not tonight.
Gabby or Rachel, can you answer that question?
We need a new application.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Um, thank you, Eric. Um, I'm afraid we have to move on to the next uh sign application, but we appreciate you coming to see us about this. Um. So, oh, do, oh, do I need to take public comment for a violation? And we have to vote?
Yeah, you have to vote still. I would read it just to be safe.
Okay. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand or you can send your questions to staff. The email at southendlbc@boston.gov. Do we see anybody raising their hand, Sarah?
I don't see any hands raised and I don't believe see any written public comment.
Okay. Um, do we need to have made a motion and have it seconded on this?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to uh continue this uh for more information and in the uh interim period uh require that they uh sign be removed within thirty days and a new application be made within sixty days.
Okay, that's a motion.
I hear that.
Was that Chris?
Yes.
Okay, it was seconded by Chris. Thank you. Um, we'll go to a vote. Um, Catherine?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Again, thank you, Eric, uh for showing up. We're gonna move on to um design review again um to fifty nine E Springfield Street. And the proposed work is to install a new handrail on the left of side of the stairs adjacent to the restaurant addition. If the applicant is here, please identify yourself.
Greg Jackson, co-owner of the building.
Hello, Greg.
Hi.
So um, do you have a presentation you want to share with us? I think he's driving.
Sorry, I, here's the first page.
I'm sorry?
I have your presentation right here, so I can just click right through it for you.
Okay, well, basically. Peter. Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. It's cold out there.
The co and I, both co-owners have.
You're back.
Anyway, as senior citizens, we are uh concerned about our safety. Uh, there was a railing there until the nineteen twenties, when the storefront was put on. The only other railing is on the right side, but that is really too low to grasp uh on your way up. Um, so we would like to put our uh taller railing on the left side alongside the um the uh cafe. Any anything else?
Um, so Gabby is showing us what looks like an elevation of the railing. Um and um.
The new railing, yes.
Yes, of the proposed railing. Um and is that the last graphic that you have? Is that it? Is that the total of your?
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right.
Looking at it offline. So it, just to clarify, it looks to me like the proposal is to put a handrail in front of the glass uh storefront, part of the storefront to this, to the commercial um blanch or whatever it's called.
Blanch.
Correct.
Left. So um and I'm assuming.
Of the cafe that uh just uh ye- uh, yes, it will be attached.
And the attachment is between in the triangle created by the treads and the risers, so it's attached to the sidewall of these two.
Yes, at the at the bottom, it shows uh where
Do you bet?
I'm here.
Go back one, Gabby.
Yeah, that that will.
Back one.
Yes, that shows where it will be, how and where it will be attached to the side of the building.
So.
Right in here.
Right in that triangular, and there's really no other place to attach it, uh because because of that wood stove.
Right, that is copper um above the uh brownstone runner down the, under the copper. It's copper, it's painted copper, but it's the original copper for the twenties renovation of the building.
Mm hmm. So um, okay, I think I think the proposal is clear. Um, I I was just looking at the staff comments, which um offered some options and I actually think it's appropriate, what's being proposed is appropriate. I'm sorry to speak up. I usually ask commissioners to speak up first. Um, but um uh, do any commissioners have questions? I should be asking that first. Catherine?
No, just want to confirm, this is it. Greg, you mentioned the uh historic rail on the other side was too low, but that's remaining. You're not doing anything there.
Oh, no, that's remaining.
Right, and you're adding this for safety.
For safety, correct.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. And um Chris, did you have any questions?
I think they've already been answered. Thank you. That that will, they the uh bottom part of the rating will be attached to the stone. Does.
That's our understanding.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Does that actually look like wood there? I thought that would be a good choice as well, but if it's copper.
It's copper.
And, right. But it's going into the stone uh wall below the copper flashing. And and most.
Right.
Um, so, okay.
Will it, will the, will the uh uh the horn, will that protrude the front of the uh restaurant or will it be flush with the end of the restaurant?
Good question.
I'm sorry?
Will the horn, the the end of the railing, will that um protrude beyond the restaurant front, the plane of the restaurant front?
No, it will not protrude beyond the front of the cafe.
Okay.
Mm hmm. So um, okay, uh I would um ask if there are any comments now. John, I think you had already asked questions. Do you have any comments?
Um, I think my comment is I don't really see a a a any other solution that would work.
Mm hmm.
Um, and I think uh Chris's question was a good one. Uh, that even though it's not really in our purview, the fact that it does, it it might be a safety hazard if it was something you catch yourself on walking by the restaurant, but uh Greg, is it um answered that it will not go beyond that?
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, that, I know, you answered my question. I'm making my comment. And my comment is, I think this is a proper solution. The only question I have is the the drawing or the only concern I have is that the drawing doesn't match the 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 slope of the steps. Um, but I assume that we can re- remand just final configuration to staff and let them work it out.
Right.
Hmm.
Um so uh, yeah. Uh, what about um Catherine? Do you have any comments?
Oh, just a an another quick question, which I assume is is uh not even valid. Greg, and I'm sure you coordinated with Nikki at Blanche and they have no issue with this because it will be visible from inside, but that's not a big deal, right? I'm sure, I'm sure they're fine with it.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, she's fine.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, and Chris, any comments?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, and um, I I see this as an appropriate solution, but I do have a comment. Could you go back to the elevation of the handrail, Gabby? Um, I would like to, the 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 drawing is vague as to exactly how the rail terminates. The handrail portion of it terminates at the top and bottom. But I would like to see either a true volute or a true lamb's tongue at either at both ends. Um, right now, it's just drawn like the pipe rail just turns down. And I think um we generally don't accept that as a way to terminate the rails. So um, uh, a cast volute or a cast lamb's tongue would be the acceptable approvable way to terminate the rail. So I would ask for that as a proviso in a motion that anyone would like to make, and I think we are actually ready for a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve this uh in concept and remand the final configuration of slope and the volute or the cast volute or what was the other thing?
Lamb's tongue.
Oh, it's a lamb's tongue. Um, uh, but but that is all remanded to staff, so they don't have to come back.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. We can go to public comment now. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendlbc@boston.gov. And Sarah, do we have anybody raising their hand or have we received any written comment?
Yeah, so I don't see any hands raised and we did not receive any written public comment.
Okay, then we can go to a vote. Thank you, Sarah. So um, uh, Chris?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. So uh, thank you very much, Greg, and good luck.
Thank you.
Project.
Right, I gotta skip through. Great.
And we will go to five fifty-eight Columbus Avenue and the work is to install a new roof deck. And if the applicant is here, please introduce yourself.
Um, sorry to interject, but John, I believe Peter Sanborn is here now.
Okay. So Commissioner Peter Sanborn has joined us. Thank you. Okay, so uh five fifty-eight Columbus Ave.
Evening fellow commissioners. Good evening, fellow commissioners.
Yep, good evening, Peter. Um, so uh please introduce yourself and um you can proceed to present your application.
Good evening, Commissioner. Um, my name is Dan Casmeric. Um, I am the architect working on the uh roof deck construction at five fifty-eight Columbus Ave. Um, we have put together a brief um schematic plan to show you the approximate footprint uh that we'd like to achieve for the roof deck. Um, the um mockup was constructed um last week and we did have um Rachel um and out there to to look at the the mockup. The deck proposal itself is pretty uh typical for for um uh what I would call most of the roof decks in in the neighborhood where we're planning on using composite decking and a deck mounted aluminum railing system. Um, the original drawings that we prepared acknowledged the five foot rear setback um on the roof. Um, however, we did have a request to shift that edge of the deck back a little bit um to eight feet. We are uh looking to sort of, I I'm looking to request um a little bit less of a setback if possible. Um, we we did have a mockup that was unfortunately um incorrectly configured. The, if you look um at this drawing below where it says existing roof hatch, uh, they had actually put the fourth corner of the mockup right, right over where that one foot two dimension starts. So we had about five or six extra feet of caution tape uh demarcating where that that corner of the deck would be. Our our corner is actually gonna be um off, off of that by the five feet.
Wait, sorry, did you just say you saw, you said that the mockup that was constructed that we went out to see wasn't actually built, right?
It was, it was built with a longer leg on the fourth corner.
So your, your application that we're seeing, that we received earlier today has a leg that goes all the way over there and what you're saying is you're not gonna build that leg.
We have always drawn the deck in this configuration, John, but the mockup showed a different configuration and I, sorry.
No, sorry, I I can interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I I put some photos of when we went out to do the site visit in here, so I think now that you're saying that and we see the photos, I think we can have a little bit of a better visual, but we might wanna do some due diligence on it, but I'll just pull that up.
Yeah, that's right. I wasn't, I wasn't saying anybody did anything wrong, but the the application that I I have, the the hard copy we downloaded on the left here. So that's, I think, what generated the confusion.
So right about where um the cursor is on the screen right now, actually.
I was gonna say, is it like around here where it's actually, okay?
Ending, yeah, and it's returning back towards that existing skylight. Um, another, another consideration.
I I'm sorry, yeah, I just wanted to show you again, because now Rachel and I are realizing realizing the difference now too. So it's this L shape. But it's built more square, so I just wanted to give you that back and forth again. So it should actually be around here. It seems like that's the hatch that we crawled out of, so it should be around here.
Are we looking back of the building?
Yes, so this was the view of the mockup from the rear, from the front. It's not visible from the rear down west. This is what it looks like.
Okay.
And what's the lattice on the left? Is that an adjacent building?
Yes, that's a neighbor.
Okay, and I just saw some people, so you could get a sense of height there. So it looks like that railing is drawn high.
The railing is drawn a little bit high, John, but we we wanted to accommodate for the height of the deck construction plus the forty-two, so.
Good, yes, absolutely.
Is there a way to thin up the deck construction? Can you do it?
Potentially.
First?
Potentially, if we go back and, we go back and look at the plan, I, there was one other note that I wanted to bring up in that it, where our plan is to span um the the structure for this across the the deck from party wall to party wall. We find that that's a a better way to avoid, you know, the sort of the 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 roof load limits that are on most of these older buildings. So we'd also love to be able to at least bring this edge of the deck to a place where we can put a beam under that, you know, under that leg of the deck so that we can go all the way across. Um, I do think that there's ways to to get this deck to be a bit lower um overall, but this is obviously the low end of the roof, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with the slow considerations of the roof too.
Mm hmm. So um, it seems that even with the clarification of the deck configuration versus the mockup, that a subcommittee may be in order to uh look at this in the field. Um, do others feel similarly? Um.
I would have no objections. I think it's a good idea.
Um, I also, well, I I'll hold my comment for a moment and ask, so um are there any questions people have about what's being proposed and and whether a subcommittee is an appropriate um approach moving forward, Catherine?
Yes, I have a question. You know, the view that was shown, the photograph showing the uh the backside was taken from, i- is it, is there a view from the street? It looked like that photo was taken from somewhere above the street.
No, it's, it was, that was us and it's, I just did something to my screen and now everything looks way too small. Can you still see everything that regular says? Okay, that's all that matters. Um, oh boy, awesome. Um, no, I think it's it's a little zoomed in, but these are just from literally uploaded from Rachel and I's phones that we we took during the site visit.
Well.
It's certainly our scale.
What's their, street or?
West Springfield.
West Springfield, okay.
Well, we might as well cut to the chase and get a subcommittee, you know, then, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Um, Peter, do you have any questions and or comments about the idea of a subcommittee?
I guess subcommittee is a good idea.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I'm happy to participate, so good idea.
Okay, John, anything?
I s- I think it's a good idea, yeah, it's, I think it's probably gonna be approvable. Maybe with a little tweak. Um, but I think that's why, that's the value of the subcommittee.
And I think also if they're doing uh party wall to party wall, be uh beams and posts, I think that that's, that's a very good thing to do and so, you know, we should be able to look at the size right up close of what they wanted.
Right, um, by having heard everybody's comments, I have to add one. Um, and it's probably not gonna make the applicant happy, but I'm afraid for any of the rail that if we were to approve any visible rail, and first of all, that's a big if, but if we were to approve any visible rail from this view, we cannot accept uh an aluminum rail in the configuration that you are showing.
I knew you were gonna say that. I was gonna say it if you weren't, you're right. I agree.
Um, the rail has to be a steel picket rail. The posts can penetrate above the top rail. Um, and they're showing that they are in your um modular aluminum system. Um, so um, you know, we would have to um, if we were to approve any visible rail, any of the visible rail would have to be steel picket. The portions of the rail that we can't see from the street, you can make however you want. But the portion that would, if we were to approve any approve, any visible rail, it would have to be steel picket. Um.
Would this, would the steel picket, John, have a continuous uh cap on it?
Yes.
A a continuous rail that's not interrupted by the posts.
Gabby, can you zoom in more on the photograph so everybody can see what John's talking about?
Yeah. So the post can penetrate the rail or interrupt the rail. It, just the opposite, the rail travels over the top of the posts. Um, and and the idea um is that it mimic the character of fire escapes because that's a language that existed in the district at the time. So um, and those were very simple steel rails and pickets and posts.
Okay.
Um, so um, so anyway, uh, but to determine whether or not we can accept any visible rail, a subcommittee will be formed um to uh help you uh establish a potential edge of the deck that might be acceptable. So um, and um, for that subcommittee, we would need somebody on the roof, perhaps even two people, one holding each end of a of a yellow tape so that um they could move backwards and forwards as we communicate through cellphone from the ground with them on the roof. That ra- rather than building a mockup um and then having to move the built mockup um be much easier if there were just two people on the roof.
And this may be uh not an appropriate question, but would there be favorable um, a a favorable decision if that section of the railing was transparent? So that it didn't look visible as a railing?
Um, we've been down that road before and we have not been able to find an acceptable um transparent replacement of steel picket. Um, glass, um, uh steel cable, horizontal steel cable, um, vertical steel cable. Um, a lot has been proposed, uh thinking it would be less visible and we've discovered that they're not. Um, glass has reflection, it gets dirty, um, and. Um, glass has reflection, it gets dirty, um, and therefore it starts to become visible. Um, so, um, uh, anyway, but, um, I appreciate the question. Um, you're not the first to have asked it. We've even gone so far as to mock up things like that and that's how we knew. Um, so, um, we've tested those, those options. So, uh, anyway, um, uh, do I hear a motion? From my commissioners?
I'll make a motion to remand this to a, a subcommittee made up of Chris and.
Uh, I'll volunteer.
John Emmerdale.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded and we can go to public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're recalling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And, uh, Sarah, anybody raising their hand or commenting via email?
So I do not see any hands raised and I don't see any written comments submitted.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So we'll go to a vote then. Um, Chris?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Dieter?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Uh, we'll now go to, uh, eighteen Milford Street. And the work is to, uh, have an existing areaway be replaced with a new, with new bluestone and landscaping. Um, install new egress well at lower garden level and install a new window. Expand an existing window opening. Okay, it's mouthful. Um, if the applicant for eighteen Milford is here, um, please identify yourself and you can proceed with the presentation.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Zach Malay here with Pittman Wardley Associates. Um, and I'm here next to me with Louis Lagon, the developer, project owner. Um, so I know this set of drawings Gabby has everything, but you can go right.
I deleted some of them out for you, um, like the less relevant ones, but you'll, you'll be able to tell what I did.
Okay, um, so here on, uh, this page here to the left, we have the original nineteen seventies tax photo. And then to the right is as the project stands today. Um, most of the items here are all administrative, so um, same on this page here, um, other than windows, doors. So we're really here to talk about the materials and the new egress well at the areaway. Um, kind of where your cursor is there. Um, so go, yep. So on the right drawings, three and four, uh, one and four actually are the existing areaway. Um, and if we go to three, um, this shows the existing window that is currently in that space. So what we're proposing is to enlarge the mason reopening, um, to get a code compliant window, um, which you'll see down here in drawing four. So we're showing the normal three by, I am showing a little bit larger than a three by three. Um, but that's kind of just the nature of the mason reopening and the window, um, and getting everything to align with above. Um, so we're proposing that well. And if we go to over, you can see another plan. Um, here's the well, and then we're proposing the um, existing, Gabby, I think there's some photos that show the existing areaway. That we're getting rid of and cleaning that material out. And yeah, so on the left, you'll be able to see um, there's that existing well that we have to enlarge. And really what we're proposing is to clean all, clean all the debris out of this area and replace it with a bluestone material. And we were going to be doing some landscaping. You can see in drawing two, but I think we've quickly realized that really sun, it's going to be difficult to grow anything here. So we're open to removing the landscape, continuing the bluestone in that area and then introduce a couple planters, um, in lieu of that permanent more landscape. And I think when, and we met with at Gabby, Rachel and Sarah, there was some question if we could uh, think about the bluestone, if that was going to be bluestone, is granite or brick a more appropriate uh, material for that area? So that's really what we hear about today to discuss.
Okay. Um, I'll, uh, thank you very much, um, Zach, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Zach. Um, so I'll ask commissioners if they have questions. Um, oh, um, I've got a question, but if none of the other commissioners have a question that I have, I'll ask it at the end. Um, John, do you have any questions?
I do. I just want to understand a couple of things. So if you go back to page four, the top of, uh, sorry, I guess it was the one with the pictures, yeah. So, so the, the areaway that you're proposing, the picture on the left, what looks like a grate there with the leaves on it, that's the top of the areaway that you're proposing?
Yes.
Oh, so that's way down. And where is street level?
Street level is right, you'll see kind of where the bottom of the front fence is. That's more or less where the sidewalk is. So it drops down almost, you know, close to three and a half, four feet. And you'll see in the section over on the right, you'll kind of see that sidewalk, you know, you'll see the average grade point there and then you'll see the drop down about.
It says, it says average grade zero, zero. So that's just a typo. Um, so this is a question, actually, I'm going to pass to John Emmerdale. Um, I don't think, given that this is all in hardscape and it's all the way below grade, I don't think they have to do the detail, the typical detail with just the steel. I think it'd be more appropriate if it was part of the hardscape right up to the edge.
Well, um, that's assuming that we accept that it's hardscape.
Okay, that's why I'm passing it to you. So, um, so that's a good point. Um, and then, and is this all we're reviewing? Rachel, we're not looking at windows or anything?
Just the areaway, window well, um, and the, the paving on the areaway. So, yeah.
Okay, um, I think that's, that was my only question.
Okay, um, Peter, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple just to get clarification, um. The window you're enlarging in the areaway, are you enlarging it both width? I.
Peter, you froze. We didn't hear your question.
Peter, try turning off your camera.
See the dimensions well enough.
Oh, I can zoom back in with, down here on this one, Peter?
My question is, pardon?
This one, is this where you said you, it was a, you needed.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now better, Peter.
Okay. Um, it, it, enlargement, is it both widthwise and heightwise?
Y- yeah, both widthwise and heightwise, because the existing window there, heightwise, it's a very small, like basement window. It's a very high up window. So we have to enlarge that, bring that window down.
Okay.
Okay. And the change is how much?
It's. So.
The size by?
Gabby, if you go to drawing three on this page, you know, we got to enlarge it, you know, about six inches on either side. And then heightwise, we got, it's almost.
That's the wrong one. Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, here I go, sorry.
So it's about, we gotta enlarge it about six inches on either side. And then we gotta drop it down a good three and a half, four feet. Because like I said, it's a very small, narrow higher up window. And I don't know from the existing conditions if there was a larger window there. Um, it's all drywalled and still, so I don't, I can't tell right now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and Catherine? Questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, Chris, questions?
Uh, a- again about that window width. Uh, six inches of brick removal to, to make the new size, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, on either side, yeah.
Okay, and you would replace the, uh, lintel and sill in kind?
Yes.
Any, any further questions, Chris?
Uh, no, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. Um, on that topic, and you can stay right there, um, Gabby, because I, I want to talk a little bit more about that. Your note says existing non-historically accurate window. Um, what is the basis of that statement? Non-historically accurate window?
It's an aluminum one over one window. That's, again, it's like a regular basement window.
Okay.
You know, it's like two feet, yeah.
What about the window opening? Do you think that was the original opening?
Again, I don't, I can't tell because it's all, and I can't get under in that where the existing grill is underneath it. And once you go inside, we haven't been able to do any sort of demo in there to remove the, the framed wall in front of that brick wall. So I don't know what is really behind, I can't, I don't know what's behind there. So I don't know if there was an original larger opening there at some point or not. I know that came up at the site meeting with with Gabby and Rachel, so we looked at that and at this point I, we haven't been able to get in there.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, that's good. So, um, I think we're ready for comments, and I have some comments about the garden itself, but I want to hear of how people feel about the enlargement of the window necessary. It, it seems like a necessary thing in order to have a code worthy egress window.
Yes.
Um, but, um, I, I'll ask for commissioner comments. Um, John?
Yes, uh, you're correct. We have allowed that several times or maybe more before because, uh, our job is not keeping people from living in units. I, um, I'm kind of impressed by how far down it is. But that's not our purview.
Right.
I think it's approved, in my mind, it's approvable.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure they have to use, I mean, this window is going to be essentially invisible. Um, so like the railings on the deck, I'm not sure they have to use a historically appropriate window unless they want to from the inside.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we always do just from the inside and just keep it continuous.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And, um, ti- typically when we've allowed the enlargement of a window to allow for code compliant egress, um, it, it only involves lowering the sill, but not widening the window. So, um, I, I was feeling a little bit maybe uneasy about that here, but, um, maybe I shouldn't.
I think because it's out of view. If this were on the next level up, where we would be seeing the head of the window, I think it would be a different case in my.
Okay, so, um, Catherine, any comments? Thank you, John.
Uh, yes, so I think it's a fine application, you know, it, it's essentially a pit. It's not visible at the street level, which is completely different, would be a completely different situation. And I think what staff is proposing with a bluestone slab, it is, is a lovely, uh, idea and would be a great solution for this area, which is below grade.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, um, Chris?
I, I, I appreciate it too, and I appreciate the history that we have allowed these, uh, enlarged openings, especially when we can't see it. And I appreciate that, uh, you're talking about still keeping the historically accurate two over two window and replacing the, the sill, mantling kind. And that's the kind of stuff I like. So I, I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Okay, um, Peter? Comments?
Think we're gonna have to upgrade Peter's connection.
Yeah, okay. Um, and P- Peter, if you, um, have an important comment, maybe you can email it to, um, if we can't hear you, um, email it to Gabby and Rachel or Sarah. And, um, if they can get your comment to me, then we'll incorporate it.
It's like having a ghost in the machine.
Peter, Peter, we're still having trouble hearing you. You're so broken up, we can't understand what you're saying.
We can, um, uh, after like today slash is hearing Peter, if there's any things we can try to help with. Um, I've had to help some Highland Park commissioners with like technology setups, just based off of what they have. So we can always do something like that after.
Oh, Gabby, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I'm fine with the, with the window enlargement and the areaway proportions. But I want to talk about the, you know, what people are referring to as the pit and the sunken area and all of that. You know, honestly, you stand at the edge of that rail on the sidewalk and you look down, you can see it. It's not invisible just because it's below grade.
I'm at the window below the, below the below grade. But yes, we understand.
Right.
Sorry.
Um, and I, um, there is a whole pallet of plant material that is shade tolerant, that would tolerate growing in that area. And unless we have a historical model that says that any, um, below sidewalk elevation um, garden areas were typically paved. I would rather see the garden planted rather than paved with anything. And, um, because that's the standard. And I don't see a reason to diverge from the standard um, here, because I've seen plenty of um, garden areas in the South End that are below sidewalk elevation that I could see into and, and they were planted. And, um, it makes a big difference. Um, so I would recommend to my fellow commissioners and to the applicant that you look into um, planting there, um, and and that, um, this be planted rather than paved. Um,
Can we comment on that suggestion?
Absolutely.
While that may exist, those areas may exist. This is currently a hardscape environment, is it not?
It's hard to tell from the photographs. It looked like gravel.
No, no, it is. It is a hardscape environment. It's just been abandoned and not maintained.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to expect someone to change something that exists in a certain configuration, to expect them to change it to a garden where it wasn't a garden.
Well, it may have been a garden historically and then paved over in the nineteen sixties, but I did not realize it was currently paved.
Well, wait a minute, but, uh, John, if what you're saying is legitimate, the construction of this areaway is going to tear all that up. You're opposing a, a, a poured concrete wall on three sides and you're going to lose eighty, if not a hundred percent of that hardscape.
Yeah.
So I think what you're asking is uh, has some credibility.
Yeah, we should move.
Sorry.
We, we should move towards the historic model, which is a planted garden.
In a, in a re, in a lower area like this?
I, there are many examples through the South End. You're only two feet lower than the sidewalk from what I can tell in that photograph. That we're looking at. I, it's a pit, in my opinion. It's a lower garden and I've seen examples of it.
Well, this is not an example of it, and I can envision a maintenance nightmare for the people who have to deal with all of a sudden plantings down in there.
Maintenance is not our issue.
Well, I'll say it's a hardscape surface now, and I don't think it's fair to expect someone to change what it is, it, in its existing form.
But John just said it's going to be ripped out to put in the larger areaway.
Well, that's their decision. That's their decision, I would think.
I'm, I'm looking at the Google Maps. Google Street View, and you can't see down into any of these areas. But there do seem to be plants in many of them.
Yeah, there's a. There, there's a lot of different, well, when we went out there for our site visit, you know, we were looking out there too as well, just to see, you know, that If there were any other that were specifically like half paved like that, and the window well, and honestly, every single building on that street was different. It seemed like everyone had different. I don't know, maybe it was like nature of like the s- sp- specific street or whatever, but. Honestly, I was looking for consistency there, and it wasn't that much.
Right, but whenever we see an opportunity to move toward a historic model. Regardless of what other. Um, examples there are on the street that don't comply with the historic model, I think we wanna move toward the historic model. And the historic model is a planted garden, and i- you know, if the. Installation of a larger areaway is gonna. You know, require them to take up most of that paving anyway, the correct. Thing to do would be to restore a garden there, and, um, you know, a homeowner is gonna take care of. Plants, they just do. Um, that's part of their, you know, responsibility of being a homeowner. Um, and gardens are a part of the South End fabric. And we're not gonna let one homeowner off. Simply because it would be easier to maintain paving. Than planting, the front gardens are supposed to be planted, and it says that in our standards and criteria. So, um, I don't feel like we have a good reason to make an exception here. Um. So.
Well, I would ask if this is indeed a garden, it doesn't look like a garden area to me at all.
Because it's not planted now. There are neighbors on this street that have planted gardens in the same space.
And there are some that don't.
Uh, I'm just gonna jump in really quick, Peter emailed his comment. Um, and he said that his comment is consistent with the chairs regarding the hardscape. He doesn't see the need for a hundred percent hardscape, there should be some landscaping, um. Yes, there should be some.
Will you have an under?
Okay. So, um, in order for the, um. Landscape to have more space, we do have a detail for the way the top of the areaway. Um, would, uh, appear at grade, and that is that the. Top six to eight inches of the areaway be constructed with a steel edge on the inside. Of the concrete wall, and that the concrete wall be held down. That six to eight. In order to allow for soil to come up to the steel edge and create, you know, additional. Garden space instead of the. Concrete wall terminating at the top, taking up what could be, um, garden space.
In fact, it looks like they've drawn their detail that way.
Oh. So maybe that's already. Part of the application.
Well, makes it even easier to do the garden like that.
Right. So, um. Uh, how does the, um. Applicant. Respond. To the suggestion of a planted garden versus paved.
Um, Louis Lagon here, hi everybody, um. Because, well, a couple of thoughts. One, because of the depth. Of the areaway from the sidewalk, it is very dungeon-like. I personally like the idea of doing, doing bluestone, and that our, our ideas were to do some. Really good-looking planters on the back end. With, with, uh, some landscape in there, appropriate landscaping in there, to be figured out, to add some, some. Some green and garden feel. Um. We also wanna do what you guys want us to do, um, so. Could we do a garden there? Yeah. Um, it, it wouldn't be. It, it would, it, it would be okay. But my personal preference would be the bluestone with planters, but I'm open.
Alright. Okay. Um. Well, I, I would, um, and thank you, Louis, I appreciate your comments, um. And I appreciate your flexibility. Um. I feel pretty strongly about this, I've seen too many gardens paved over. Where, that ought not to be. Um. So I would. Strongly advocate for a motion. That includes. A garden at the garden level. Um, and I invite. Those who are not comfortable with that, to walk around the district and look at successful gardens that are set. Below the sidewalk elevation, and they contribute a lot to the public realm.
John, I just wanna point out that I'm re, excuse me, I'm rereading the project description, which says. Existing areaway to be replaced with new bluestone and landscaping, so. It seems to me, as Lou just said, there was some sort of plan to do. Uh, something of both, and I, I would think it could be, um. Left up to the applicant to have. Some sort of combination.
Um, I don't see why. It's a garden, it should all be planted. There's no, there's no activity out there now, putting a table and chairs out there, at least I hope they're not. Um. You know, that's not what the gardens were for, and we have. A standard and criteria that tells us we're supposed to protect the character of these gardens.
Well, isn't that opening for people to be able to exit from?
Yeah, and in a fire, in a fire, they can run across the ground cover. You know, when they come up out of that areaway. You know? Yeah. They've gotta go upstairs, it's not exactly, you know, an accessible route, they've gotta climb a ladder. They can. Take two steps across the garden and up the stairs to the. You know, I, I had of. An egress into my garden exactly like that. Um. When I lived on Worcester Square. If I crawled out of the areaway, I had to crawl through the garden. To get to the street, so. I mean, that's very typical. So. So I, I think we're ready for a motion, so. If, if I don't hear one, I'll make one myself.
Oh, it's ready, uh, somebody wanna make a motion?
I, I moved that we accept this as it is, uh, uh, planting is encouraged. Uh, I think that. Uh. I, 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 with planting is encouraged, I think we should accept it as it is.
I, I would like to make an amendment to that motion, or offer an amendment to that motion. Which is that, I think that we should direct them to do, so, uh, John made two points, I, I understand John prefers gardens. Uh, he's a landscape architect, but. If the historic model is a garden in the front, and in the past. Um. Did several decades, I've never known John to be wrong about that when talking about what our regulations require. Uh, then I think that we should. Um. Require the garden, uh, but remand, uh, this, uh, review to staff. In case it's not feasible for some reason. Um. So I'm offering that as an amendment.
Well, I happen to prefer Chris's motion. I'm, I'm also looking at staff's suggestions, and I always tend to, um. Agree with what our staff recommends, and so Chris is proposing a motion. That we accept it as it is and encourage plantings, I like to give the applicant some sort of leeway in a situation where it's not. Clear to me that every space like this has to be a garden.
Even though the standards and criteria say so.
They say planting is encouraged.
The standards and criteria say encouraged.
Hmm.
Guess you've been wrong once.
Okay, I guess I've been wrong. Stand corrected.
So the question is, Chris, do you accept, um. John Freeman's amendment or not?
Sending it back to staff for their further comments, if, if, on, on what's feasible, was that, if, John?
Essentially, yes. Um, but I can retract it because it was based on, uh, my belief that. Our criteria, standard criteria, obviously on case-by-case basis, but required planting. I mean, I agree that it should be planted. But I don't think we should require it if our standards and criteria do not require it.
So we go back to Chris's motion.
Yes.
Just so everyone knows, the standards and criteria state for front yards, planting is encouraged.
Okay. Chris's motion is consistent with the standards and criteria, so. My. Um, amendment.
And I'll second Chris's motion.
Okay. So. Um, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we can go to public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And do we have anybody who? Is raising their hand, Sarah?
I do not see any hands raised, and we did not receive any written public comment.
Okay. Um. In order to allow. Peter. To vote, I'm gonna ask for Peter's vote first, and Peter, if we can't hear you, please email your vote. To staff. Hi. Wh- what was that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Catherine?
John, I see that Kevin is here now.
Oh, Kevin, have you joined us?
I have, yes, but keep, keep plowing ahead.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll vote aye.
Kevin, were you here for the hearing? I mean, for the, for this application?
I was, yes.
Would you like to vote?
Um, if.
I, I think we have six now, and only five can vote, right?
Oh, I see, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kevin, next time.
So should I? Not vote?
No, Catherine, you can vote, you've been, yes, you remember how we discussed how at whichever commissioner arrives first is the one who will vote? You arrive first and are voting.
Well, I was trying to be gracious, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I vote aye.
Okay. Uh, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes nay. But we have four to one, and the motion passes.
Great.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to administrative review. Um. In order to, do I need to read this? Statement?
Yeah, why don't you read it?
Okay, in order to expedite the review process, the commission has delegated the approval of certain work items. Such as those involving ordinary maintenance and repair, restoration or replacement. Or which otherwise have a minimal impact on a building's appearance. The commission staff pending ratification at its monthly public hearing, having been identified as. As meetings, these eligibility criteria and all applicable. Applicable guidelines, the following applications will be approved at this hearing. Do I need to read off the addresses of all of these?
No.
No.
Oh.
So do I hear a motion to approve administrative review?
I move to approve the administrative review.
I second that.
Okay. Um, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we don't take public comment for this item, so we'll go right to a vote, Peter? Peter, Peter, you're muted.
Peter.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Catherine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kevin? Oh, no, Kevin, you're not voting, sorry, um, John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries.
Great. And now. And by the way, um, I took the. Minutes off, the minute approval off of the agenda because. Forgot to update it to the January date, so we can't vote on them, so we'll just move right to the standards and criteria discussion.
I have a brief policy proposal, I think as a courtesy. Coming up, uh, that the non-voting alternate should second. Any motion they might want to.
Hmm.
This is a way of getting. A saying.
More time. I like it.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, well, hi, everyone, it's Joe Corish, I'm the Director of Design Review for the Boston Landmarks Commission. Uh, we have two items that we discussed. At the January hearing, one relates to outdoor dining guidelines and the other updated window guidelines. Um, when we presented in January, we thought. The outdoor dining was more time-sensitive, but as it turns out. Um, the applications have already gone out for, um, the twenty twenty-five outdoor dining. Program on public properties, so, anything that we propose to adopt. Would only be effective for, for twenty twenty-six, so it's not as time urgent as we thought. Uh, but related to the outdoor dining guidelines, um, we've distributed a draft of what. Staff proposes, um, I think for tonight, we have, um. You know, probably two questions, um, the outdoor dining can be divided into two areas, there's the outdoor dining. On public property, that's what you see, um, since COVID, that have been popping up in parking spaces. Public parking spaces, um, the outdoor dining program has a great map. And, um, in twenty twenty-four, there were a total of seven in the South End. Um, those licenses are renewed annually, um, so it's something that. Staff or the commission could review annually. Um, the other would relate to outdoor dining on private property, so new. Outdoor dining, uh, patios, and, you know, I, I think our question tonight would be. Probably one, if commission even thinks we want to regulate. Outdoor dining at all, I mean, currently we have. Uh, no guidelines, so there's no current. Review of any outdoor dining installation, so I think that would be a question, and then the. Depending on how. You think we should move in that direction, would we want purview over maybe just the outdoor dining? On private areas or outdoor dining in, um, public areas, so I, you know, I think that's where. I see us for, um, starting the discussion tonight.
Um, Joe, I think there's a third. Type of outdoor dining, um, because there are outdoor dining areas. That long before COVID, that we were approving, reviewing and approving, and sometimes not approving. Um, that were on public sidewalk, because there was no setback. For the building, so it had no private. Property, the only place it could put outdoor tables was immediately outside the building on the public sidewalk. And it was approved as long as there was an accessible route. That could pass by the outdoor dining, so if the sidewalk were wide enough. To allow for outdoor tables against the face of the building. And you could still get by with an accessible route in a wheelchair, that would be approvable. But it was all on public land, it had nothing to do with COVID, had nothing, that all predated. It wasn't, you know, going out into the su- into the street and taking up a parking space, it was on public sidewalk. So that's a, a third type of outdoor dining that exists in the South End.
And when you reviewed those projects, what did you? Base your review on in, in terms of standards?
Um. Color of. Furniture color of the separation being used. Between the furniture and the sidewalk, whether it was railings or planters. Or. Whatever, the material of the planter. We. We based it on consistency with the character of the. We based it on consistency with the character of the district. So in the absence of standards, but. The, the, um, you know, staff presented them to us and we reviewed them. So.
And lighting as well.
Right, and lighting also was reviewed. And we reviewed lighting the way. You know, generally the way we would. Review lighting related to signage.
I think. Sorry. I think generally. We rarely had any trouble with furniture where we. Needed review was often about the. Uh, the perimeter enclosure. Um. Because we saw everything, you know, we saw. Um, wood slats, uh, plastic sheets, um. Steel. Galvanized steel, uh, you know, railings and. We would encourage something that would use materials of the district.
Right. The other thing too is that sometimes these seasonal outdoor. Dining areas would require. The, if they had posts and chain or posts and fence. Um, separating. The tables and chairs from the rest of the sidewalk, it would. Their proposal sometimes required the removal of brick in the sidewalk.
Exactly, yes.
And, and that is in our purview as well. Um, so, um, you know, we would talk to them about. You know, well, what replaces the post when you take the post out of the hole?
Right.
And, um, that sort of thing.
Um, I think we required that the brick be able to be put back in when they took the post away. It's a safety thing too, but didn't leave holes in the stream.
Welcome to Zoom, enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
So, so. So, um. I. I think it's a good thing to, um, have standards and criteria. For outdoor dining. Um, and, um, one thing we wouldn't want to see would be a proliferation of white vinyl enclosures. For outdoor dining going throughout the South End without regulations, that's something that could happen. Um. So, um. That would be my, I would advocate for having. Um, guidelines such as the ones that were written up here.
I agree, I, I don't, I think it can be very loose as to the furniture. Um, because I, you know.
I don't think we've ever talked about style of furniture, we've just always advocated for dark colors.
Yeah. But I think lighting is an important part of it because. Um. We've sometimes seen applications where the lighting was. Or if we didn't ask incredibly bright or, you know, uh, some. Uh, very colorful, lots of colored lights. That kind of thing, and that's, you know, great for holiday lights, but not.
Right. We, we don't want necessarily a carnival atmosphere. Um, running down the streets necessarily, but, um. Yeah, I think lighting is important too, I actually sent. Some comments to Rachel regarding this, um, what, what concerns me is the popularity of. Um, string lighting or what we. Often call in the catenary lighting. Um, that's strung between posts. What we end up with are. Posts for one. Um, and that's something I'm, wouldn't be thrilled about, but, um. Even if it was acceptable to introduce posts for string lighting, I, I'm not crazy about the idea of, you know, bare light bulbs. Um, on string light, lighting being. You know, the. This being an acceptable standard, um, and, um, in the past, we've actually told. People if they were going to have string lighting, um, or catenary lighting, that it should be canister lights. That, um, we only see the illumination on the ground, we don't see. The. Glowing light bulb in the air. Um, so, um. And they make small canisters to be, um. Used on catenaries. Uh. They're, they're available, we use them in our own projects, so, um. That's something that I would like to recommend being. Um, added in. If other people felt it was. Also, um, important.
Do you think we could require that then? I think it'd be great if we could.
Yeah, I worry about the kind of used car lot look.
Yeah, it's awful.
And, um, you know, during COVID, we. We were very, um. I think people got a lot of latitude simply because it was such an extreme circumstance. But I think, you know, we have to, you know, get back in the saddle and keep things, you know, better, you know, well regulated. Um.
I could just add for, you know, for background, this, um, is based on the Back Bay standards, the Back Bay prior to COVID and for many years. Had design guidelines for outdoor dining on private property, and then it was. When the proliferation of the installations came in public areas in the parking spaces, the question came up, you know, could those be regulated? And the answer was yes, if we came up with design guidelines, so we, we created design guidelines that really mirrored what. Already existed on private property, but with some massaging, and so for the most part, what you're seeing here with some. Um, changes has been what's been adopted, uh, in the Back Bay. And, you know, I, I think, you know, at least, you know, it sounds like from our January. Meeting and this meeting that there is an appetite to move forward with these. Design guidelines, and I think, um, you know, we could recommend. Doing a, a subcommittee that would deal with this and, you know, discuss it further at a. Public meeting, or, you know, if you wanted to do just a public meeting with the entire. Commission, and what we really want to make sure we're doing before anything is adopted. Is making it public and getting feedback from the restaurant. Owners and operators to, you know, to see how they feel about that, so I've been in touch with the. Operators, the, um, managers of the outdoor dining program from the mayor's office. Um, I'm still waiting to find a contact at ISD, um, who handles the permits on, on private property.
Hmm. Uh, are umbrellas allowed? In. Back Bay or it's a part of this?
And they, they are in Back Bay, but we have standards about. Not having secondary. Um, advertising, so like not having Coca-Cola or, um, Budweiser on it, but you.
The next slide.
You could have the name of your restaurant on it.
Right.
Got it, okay.
Kevin, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, so Joe, I appreciate your comment about reaching out to the, um, you know, the businesses in the neighborhood, I think. Um, that is my only hesitation at this point, um, I would wanna, I would wanna make sure that. Uh. An effort is done more than posting something on the website, um, but actual, you know, outreach to. The businesses in the neighborhood so that they have the opportunity to review, and especially now, I mean, that you're, the city is giving plenty of time. Um, for, uh, because this isn't going to be taking place this summer, so, um, my, my only, um. The only reason I would potentially be against this is if, uh, restaurants weren't engaged, um, and so, you know, that beyond ISD, there's the Office of Neighborhood Services, of course, that can. Reach out, they know these folks, um, so that's. Uh, when we take this up for a vote, um, following any hearing, um, if I am voting, I, I, the, my first question is gonna be about outreach to, to the restaurants.
Yeah, absolutely, and you, any suggestions that you have of, of how to do it, um. You know, we definitely plan. To work with ONS, um, Office of Neighborhood Services, um, to get the word out, you know, have it online, but, you know. There's no immediate rush to pass this now, so we wanna get the. Feedback that we have, but we do have one commissioner on the Boston Landmarks Commission that operates a restaurant in the South End, and we wanna. Reach out and get their, um, feelings about this, and, you know, it will be going to. Um, the Boston Landmarks Commission, you know, if the South End Commission wants to move forward with this, then there would be a public hearing with the Boston Landmarks Commission to. Formally adopt it, um, we also have another commissioner, um, in the Back Bay who operates. Restaurants in, in the South End, so I plan to reach out to that person as well and just get their. Feedback and, you know, I think. We briefly discussed this, um, Gabby and, and Rachel and I, you know. We can print some flyers out and go around to the restaurants and just make sure, you know, we're, we're trying to get as much information out as we can.
Yeah, we're planning for that, Kevin, just so you know, it's not, definitely not an afterthought at all, we're talking how to do it.
And I'm happy to help, I live in the neighborhood, so happy to flyer, so.
I think I can say, Kevin and to other commissioners and to you, Joe, is that in the past, when we have reviewed outdoor dining. Um, you know, we always work with applicants so that they can get what they. Need in order to be a going concern, um, so, you know, we've. It's always been very amicable between us and the applicant. And, um, you know, the applicant has always gotten. An outdoor, I don't know if I can say always, but, um, I can't recall. Us actually outright denying an outdoor dining area. Um, and, and applicants have always been very amenable to, you know, any suggestions we've.
Right.
Placement or things like that, it's always been a bit of a collaboration and, um. And people, you know, have succeeded, but what I've seen in other parts of the city outside of the district is where there isn't regulation. Or, or there's regulation maybe by ISD, but not by anybody else, is that edges of the outdoor dining start to creep out. And get larger and larger, um, migrating, creating, um. Situations where people have to step into the street in order to bypass an outdoor dining area, and that's unsafe. And so, you know, I think some level of, you know, having evidence that we have an approved design that has to be. Uh, adhered to, um, you know, and putting people through a. You know, review process within the district, I think can be a good thing. Um, without having to be obstructionist for, for business.
Yeah, I agree.
Design and, and then the. Uh, and then the, the footprint basically, so that they, we have to, you can keep track of that.
That's right, exactly, just as a document to track. Um.
Yeah, so I agree all of that, and John, I think that all makes sense, and I understand that the commission has worked with business owners. In the past and will continue to, to the extent we can just make this as much, you know, admin review and not require applicants to come. With very clear guidelines, I think is, would be the goal, and that's why I think, uh, you know, including as much comment as we can ahead of time before adoption is critical.
Mm-hmm. Good idea, Kevin.
I think Peter has his hand.
Yep.
Awesome.
Hi, everybody, I've joined by phone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Loud and clear, Peter.
Okay, um, I'd just like to. Know what the thinking is behind the sandwich board prohibition.
Technically, they're all illegal. Throughout the city.
Say that again, please, Joe.
They're, they're not allowed across the city, I mean, all the ones that you see. Are legal.
Really?
Is it a safety thing or?
Yeah, you know, there, there was, um, there was a pilot program. Many years ago, but probably about eight years ago where they were allowed on a limited basis, and. It's very hard to enforce, and, you know, it's not something in just the historic districts, it's everywhere in the city, and. I know in the past ISD had done sandwich board sweeps where they would, they would go and they would take them away and then, you know, in another. Couple of weeks, they would show up again, so. That's something, that's just based on the sign, the, the city's sign code, they're not allowed.
I. I have commented on the, the third-party signage on umbrellas, it says it's discouraged, you know, I think a French restaurant needs to have Pernod on their, uh, umbrellas and Pellegrino on Italians and. I, I think that's appropriate, that's, that's just my opinion though, so, um. I think it adds to the charm of being able to eat outside like a European.
Well, it's only discouraged.
I know, I know.
So Joe, I, I appreciate that clarification that it's illegal, but they. Given the fact that they, they are everywhere. Um, and there seems not to be any enforcement. I wonder if our standards should just be silent on this.
That would be fine, I, I think that's fine, I think.
I. I don't know, I'd leave it in.
And then if they show up, well. Yeah.
If it's a citywide, uh. Requirement, wh- why would we take that out?
Well, you know, I mean, we could, I mean, to Peter's point, I mean, we. If we adopt this and then at some point they become legal. How do we feel, are we that against them or?
But also somebody could put something up that's actually an obstruction to pedestrians, and in that case, you can say, hey, you can't have that there. If, if it's not the, the guidelines, then you have no.
And that's like, well, that would be up to ISD to enforce, I mean, we don't look at.
Oh.
Safety, unfortunately.
I'd like to be able to enforce it myself.
So. So Joe, last night you said if something said should, we can't require it.
Correct.
So if this comes in all of these things and it says they're encouraged. Um. Or they're. That means we can't acquire that thing.
Correct, correct, it's guidance, it's giving guidance and recommendations.
Guidance to the owner, not to us.
I think in this sort of example, John, like, you could sort of think of it like. It's, it's discouraged, right, but the applications are coming into the office for Rachel. And I to look at, um, and that might be, we might see them propose umbrellas with thirty, third-party signage, and we might not. Email them back to say, no, you can't do this, but we may say, this is discouraged, have you explored other options, so it's just like something that, you know, we could always ask them that. And our sort of like round, like our questions, we always ask to applicants on their, on their scope, does that sound something like that would maybe sort of be a good level? Of clearance before it gets to you?
I just think in the past, the interpretation has been that that was guidance to us, and I, I, it's just, you know, it's fine, we'll follow the rules, but it. But I think in, um. John, you can. Say something different, but I think in the past, when something said it should be this way. And we kind of took it like, uh, there had to be a good reason not to do it.
Well, I just got vetoed on the word encouraged. And so I'm feeling gun-shy about all of this.
I, it's part of why I brought it up, because I felt like. Yeah, I mean, it was discussion last night that I. Um. Wanted to be really clear on what the regulation said about the landscaping, we have absolutely required landscaping in front gardens for decades.
Right.
With no question and no.
I didn't want to open up that conversation again, John, but.
Please don't, can we move on?
Well, okay, but so in, in terms of this, I mean, I remember looking at some zoning rules in recent, and saying, when you, when, when is, in zoning. When something says it's encouraged or it's preferred, a developer looks at it and says, I don't have to do that. Um, and. The answer was, well, you know, the, the boards or the various reviewers. Who are whoever. Who have to approve something, it falls to them to interpret it, but I think. Understanding and trying to, trying to understand is that that is. Now different.
Well, I think when we have, I mean, what I would propose doing, I think, you know, I would suggest, I think, making a subcommittee. To work on. Both this and, and the windows when we get to the windows, and the subcommittee is open to all the commissioners, but at least if we had. Three members willing to come to a. A public meeting to further discuss these and then bringing it back to the commission for. Further discussion, but I think these are the questions when we get into the nitty-gritty of. How strongly do you feel about? Umbrellas and advertising, and you want to make it a shall, or do you want to make it a should?
Well, that's what, maybe I, maybe we break these into shoulds and shalls, you know, then, and those are the guidelines overall, but the shoulds are the things they have to do, and the shalls are, you know. The. Or the shalls are the, what they have to do, and the shoulds are the encouraged or the guidelines. That they can follow.
So, Joe, I have to ask you a question. Why are.
Go ahead.
Offering with guidelines and not making these. Standards and criteria.
Well, they would be. Well, they would be part of the standards and criteria.
Yes, but they're all full of shalls and mays and preferred and encouraged and discouraged. The, the only thing that is actually absolute is sandwich boards are not permitted. Everything else says may, preferred, discouraged, encouraged. You know, even the light temperature, which in my mind is non-negotiable, is shown as preferred. So I'm wondering why, why is all of this just guidelines and not actual, you know, this is what you have to do?
Well, it sounds like we have one volunteer for the subcommittee. That's what the subcommittee will work on. This is a draft, John. It's a draft.
Oh, okay.
We're not voting on it tonight.
But you're, I mean, it is a draft and I, you've done a lot of work on this and it's the, the structure of it and the things that are included is a great, is great work. I think I, I agree with John's question though, and it sort of, it becomes a broader question very quickly is if, if it was all written with, if anything, windows, outdoor dining or something else are all written with shoulds and encourage and preferred, they really doesn't have any teeth.
Right.
And you know, the only thing we could actually say was get rid of the canvas portion. I'm not criticizing your writing. That's, that, this is a great amount of work and I really appreciate it. It's, it's going forward and looking in the future at our regulations. Because I, for, for all this time that we've been on the board, we've, we've always thought that should meant it was us to up. You know, in, in zoning, they, there's a, there's an old adage that a, uh, that a, a variance, if something requires, God, what is it? But it's one form, it meant that you, they had to have a reason to do it. And in the other form, it, you had to have a reason not to do it. And so we looked at should and, and shall that way. You can't do, if it says shall, you have to do it. If it should, you would have to have a reason to not do it. A good reason, not just not wanting to, because, you know, we, I do a lot of work or used to do a lot of work for restaurants. We still do. And what happens is a vendor comes through like Budweiser that has a lot of money says, we'll give you 20 umbrellas if it says Budweiser on it. And they're looking at, you know, spending 500 bucks an umbrella and all of a sudden they've got 20 of them free. They're going to go with the Budweiser umbrellas. And it's hard to turn down. You know, $5,000 worth of umbrellas or, and that happens with all sorts of things. That's why you see all these, especially, you know, not the fancier restaurants, but the lower end restaurants with, you know, Coca-Cola plastered on everything and, and Budweiser and Pernod and, um, you know, and I, I mean, I do kind of agree with Chris. It's not really Italian restaurant if it doesn't have that on it, but, but that's what happens. And it becomes an economic decision and, you know, restaurants run at low margin. They, they, uh, they're going to take every opportunity when somebody offers them money or, or most will. So if we don't want something, we need to say.
And I would say to Kevin's point, we want to have the feedback from the restaurant owners.
Of course, absolutely. I'm also happy to participate in a subcommittee, um, but I don't want to take away from somebody who's more knowledgeable. So, um, if there's others interested, go for it. Don't sell yourself short.
Yeah, don't say so sure. You've got the public outreach in gold standard. So good.
I'll do the subcommittee on this. Sure.
Okay. And again, thank you. So, so John Freeman, Jen Amadeo and Kevin Reddy. But again, these will be public meetings and all commissioners are, are welcome to attend. But this way, you know, as long as we have at least two of you showing up, we'll have a forum.
Kevin, you live here. I, you live in the South End, right? So that's, I'm glad somebody.
Yep.
Well, I think we can move to, to the windows, which is, you know, we're, we're in a similar
All right. I have to go home now. No.
Yeah, you go jump out of a window. No. So, um, you know, we, we talked about this last, last month. You know, we were in a situation where the law department had, um, recommended that we make changes to the window guidelines. It was delayed because we didn't have the quorum of commissioners needed to vote on that. So we finally do have, have the quorum of commissioners. And, you know, a lot of this had come down to again, like if we had been talking about the should and the shalls, specifically related to curved sash windows. So we took staff, took a, um, a pass at coming up with these revised guidelines. Um, and we did incorporate some, um, information. One included the treatment of area ways or, or, or new window wells. Just to make that clear in these standards and criteria, these guidelines.
So this is written a lot clearer. I have to, I mean, in, in the respective challenge, that's great.
Yeah. So this, I mean, so that was, you know, so that's, that was our goal. You know, we, we want to make this user friendly, especially for constituents in the neighborhood. So it's, it's clear. We want it clear for staff and we want it clear for commissioners. Um, you know, again, I think we, we want to have as much feedback as we can get from the neighborhood on this. So I would suggest, um, you know, maybe, I don't know if you'd want to do a separate subcommittee or if you want the same sub, subcommittee to work on both of these.
Well, I feel like I ought to be on the window subcommittee as the architect here. But I could, we could do both as long as it wasn't, you know, uh, meetings right after each other.
And I, I'm unvolunteering for the window subcommittee.
Maybe Chris, would you like?
I would like to be on it as well.
Great. Okay.
Hey, great. Thank you, Chris.
Somebody else.
I would too.
Peter. Good. Okay.
Only if you get a better connection, Peter. Man, spend the money. Get wifi. Can I just ask, and, uh, similar, I guess, vein as the restaurant outreach, um, is there an opportunity to engage like the comm, the, the frequent window vendors? Is that not appropriate? Um, is there a way to get out draft materials before something, I guess, is voted on to, uh, the contractors or the, the architects?
I would say yes. I think we can certainly, you know, we have our frequent flyer list of window contractors and companies and, and architects. So we can certainly, you know, I, it'll certainly go out to our mailing list of interested parties as everything always goes. You know, we will, um, enlist again, ONS, Office of Neighborhood Services.
And just like having it on the website, like we, I think that's what we were talking about, just having these things there for people to see and to have access to, to review.
Yeah. And we post it on our socials as well.
Yeah. And I think, I think for both outdoor dining and for the windows, we'll, we'll certainly do a blitz on our, our social media post to get it out to, uh, you know, I would say, you know, this one's probably a little more time sensitive just because you want to get this one squared away.
Yeah. I mean, I just think in the long run, it'll be helpful to the commission if there's earlier input, um, and, you know, proactive outreach that we can point to.
You know, going a step beyond what Kevin just said, I wonder if there's any reason to include the providers and vendors or manufacturers, just to find out as a point of information, what materials are being developed that we may or may not know about that could be considered? You know, when applications come forth to, to, you know, whether this type of, um, material would be approvable.
Heretic.
No, no, I agree with Catherine. There's a lot of new materials out there for everything. And some of them are terrible and some of them are, are pretty good. And, I, I mean, we, we allow aluminum clad windows and that was because, it was because of one person who would just not let it go. Or we allow aluminum windows too. And who proved that you really can't tell the difference, uh, what was his name, John?
David something.
Yeah.
So we have in here, it says replacement of nonhistoric windows and like dot, 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 or composite material deemed appropriate by the commission. So we have some flexibility there, but maybe making it a little bit more clear, you think on that, like?
Well, I, I don't know, Gabby, if we have to be specific in the guidelines. But if we had more information on things that are being developed so that we understood, so when somebody comes in and says, oh, well, you know, this is, this is perfectly fine. And given the climate change concerns or weatherization and so on, if, if we're aware of things, then it, we don't have to be convinced on the spot. I, I don't know.
Like lunch and learns. I mean, I, I know what you're talking about. It's like a lunch.
A lunch and learn. Exactly.
To do that, uh, years ago, we'd like maybe twice a year, three times a year, have a vendor come in at the end of the meeting to take, teach us about things.
Well, I would propose that it not be at the end of a meeting.
Well, when the, at some point.
Yeah.
I mean, it usually wasn't very long. It was, but I remember Anderson coming in and talking about their new composite materials at that time and.
Well, I would think we'd want to do that in person and you'd actually want to see this stuff and, and, you know.
Yeah.
Like you wouldn't love that during your hearing. You want to already have seen that all. You don't need to want to make their case about a specific material, get a deep dive on.
Exactly.
Polyash thing. Yeah, sure. Okay.
One thing I think Chris pointed out last time was the 50%, just clarifying that sentence. Uh, I guess it's on the other page. Was that you, Chris? That 50% wasn't clear of what?
I, I don't know that that was me, but, um,
Well, whoever.
This says, I, I know, I remember you saying that, John. Um, but I think someone did bring that up because of like glass or something. But here, I mean, we can make sure it says it more clear. It says if the commission determines repair 50% of, 50% of wood elements.
In, in a single, in each window, I think was, maybe it was Catherine. I don't know.
Oh yeah. No, I remember that now. Yep.
I don't think it was me. I just remember somebody saying that.
No, I remember someone said that, like, well, what if one window is totally irreparable? And then the other is perfect. And they're like, well, the sum of this is, yeah, I remember that. Okay. No, totally.
Fifty-one or fifty-two percent.
Well, that, that actually came from a vendor. That was the 50% was, um, Anthony Greenwood. Saying that he could fix any window. He's a old Boston, he owns Old Bostonian. And he said he can fix any window if 50% of the wood is still there.
I just have a question on the, the window, the, the first point, window modification exceptions. I mean, I know one place where the floor has been raised like that. And then Victorian doors are all short and everything's short. We allow that to, to accommodate a, a raised floor elevation?
I think it would be a case by case. I mean, I think.
Okay. I, I see exceptions and I just didn't know who would be doing, doing that.
Is that referring to the egress doors?
I don't, I, I think it's, it says it's elevating the first floor and they've done that, um, uh, there's one on, uh, Tremont and Pembroke where they raid the, they put in a storefront and they raised the, the ceiling of that storefront. And so the floor above it got shorter. So the parlor got two feet shorter. And so the parlor doors were all cut off at two feet. So instead of being like nine feet, they're seven, it, that's very funky. So I would.
I should add something. So some, so a lot of this, um, language, we recently, uh, adopted new standards and criteria in the Bay Village Historic District. And we worked very closely with a climate resiliency, um, scholar who, who was working in the environment department at the time. And so this was related to, and it's something we have to start to think about how we're going to adopt these buildings for climate resiliency and, and, you know, being in a flood area.
Sea level rise. So you.
Yes, yes.
Right. There won't be any more garden level apartments.
Yeah, right, right.
Planting in the front area.
Well, what's the history of the, of the grade being raised in the South End? Isn't that why a lot of these gardens are suppressed?
I know. So what I can tell you, in Bay Village, the entire neighborhood was, was raised 12 feet. And it sounds crazy, but that was all done in the 1860s and 1870s.
There is a large section of the South End. I'm just not remembering the history where the grade was raised. John, do you remember that or?
I don't. I've read it. I've read it in the topographic history of Boston. Um, it talks about it in the book called the Topographic History of Boston. Um, they talk about the raising of the South End. That's why the alleys are so much lower than the streets. Because the alleys weren't raised, but, um, the streets were. I don't know. I don't know how it was done.
Well, it sounds like this is so, you know, I think we have our subcommittee, so we'll, you know, we'll dive deeper into these in, in the subcommittees. And then, um, you know, again, those will be open to the, the public and we'll welcome public input at, at those. And then we'll bring it back to the full commission for review and recommendation to the Boston Landmarks Commission to adopt at some point.
Um, my, my final comment on, I think my second comment on this is, and I can't find it in what I'm looking at now, but there was a phrase, uh, if it's absolutely necessary. And I thought it was under window sash. That I thought, you know, if we're trying to clarify this and make it more specific in the draft I have that I'm looking at. Is it? Maybe it's.
Maybe it's under egress. That might be where it was.
Here we go. It, uh, the commission will acquire the use of wood brick mold painted the same color as the metal sash and will only allow the panning of the original wood sill where absolutely necessary. Is that removed now?
No, it's there. I just, I just read it.
Okay. Sorry. I was reading it from my, my Google Doc.
It's on the second page, slide two of two, the first, um, sentence under window sash continued.
Yeah, I see. So, I mean, I, it, for the subcommittee, my only thought is since we're getting more specific and we're saying 50%, I would try to flesh out what absolutely necessary means if possible to.
Good, good, good point.
Yeah, I think so. That's great. That's like one of the things we probably talk about at a hearing if we kept it as is.
All right. Well, thank you. I think, um,
Anything else?
On these, if not, I think, John, you can move on to the next item if you're.
Yeah. And staff, we can.
Any staff updates?
Do we have any staff? No, just kidding. Hi. Yes. Well, you guys already know, it's pretty much just you guys and it seems like a couple of other people still logged on. But yes, I'm going to be transitioning into a new role as preservation project manager. So, um, I will still be helping as needed. I'm, this might, I assume this is going to be my last South End hearing unless something really crazy happens next month. But, um, I think you, you know, I know you will be in good hands, but it's always been great to work with you guys and I'll still be around and you will not have seen the last of me today.
I hope not. Thank goodness.
Thank you, Gabby. You are fantastic.
Thank you.
You've been terrific, Gabby. We will sure miss you.
Thank you. I will miss you guys all. And I have to say it again for the public record, even though I said it for you guys, I gotta lock it into the public record. My first hearing when I first started here, South End went until like 11:30 or something like that. And I was like, wow, this is what this job is like. And now here, here I am. And now my last hearing is South End. So it has been an honor to work with you all. Amazing minds. Especially you, Rachel.
Well, congratulations, Gabby.
Thank you.
Congrats. Congratulations, Gabby.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, but I, I also think aside from that, I'm not really thinking of any other staff updates that are relevant.
Well, that's a big one.
That's for me.
Pretty good.
That's a big one.
Yeah. So we'll be in touch, I would say sometime this month to try to, once we get our plan set, oh, Chris, our plan set for, um, outreach for the, um, standards and criteria updates. And we'll move forward on figuring out the subcommittee meeting dates and stuff like that.
That's great.
Great.
And the training, the training last night was much better. And the training, the training last night was much better than any other training I've been to this year.
Yeah. Wow.
This year, it's only been
Oh, thanks, John.
Well, we appreciate all of you making the time to come and we hope it was valuable. And we're really excited you picked up your copies of the handbook.
I lose mine tonight, sorry.
Yay. Amazing. That's what they're for.
Great job. Yeah. I already told Sarah, great job putting that together. And thank you very much.
Yeah.
Big job, as always, getting the administrative review longer than the uh, ones that we have to look.
We try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh.
Your motion to adjourn? I moved to adjourn. Okay, voice vote, everybody. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hearing none. See y'all next month. Good job, John. Thank you.